We're going to call this special meeting of the City Council to order. Would you all please join me in rising for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We do have, in recognition of the importance of this meeting and the high level of public interest in it, we do have a little bit of housekeeping to take care of right now. Much as I know everybody likes to be in the same room at the same time, we cannot have people standing, so, in the room. So if you do not have a seat, we have to ask you to relocate to one of the two overflow rooms. Jeff, I think the one overflow room is room 207, up on the second floor of City Hall, sort of roughly up that way. And then in addition, we also have a room set up over in the Adult Community Center. The Adult Community Center.
There's a back staircase right over here that'll basically take you straight up to the conference room. We could go up the main staircase.
Now, before people leave, because I also want to make sure people understand, being in one of these other rooms does not mean that you will not have a chance to speak if you wish to speak to the council. There are comment cards up there, and we have a procedure in place for collecting the comment cards and making sure that when your turn is coming up, that you will be notified to be able to come down. But from a fire control point of view, we cannot have people standing in this room. So if you don't have a seat, I'd ask you to please pick one of those two locations and relocate there.
It's against the law. Sorry, it's against the fire code. It would be against the law. That's why we've got the overflow seats. So it's intended on the table. You've got to have a seat.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate everybody's participation in that, or following of that. First item on the agenda is public comment. This is actually public comment for items not on the agenda. So if anybody wishes to address the council on an item not on the agenda, this is the time to do so. I actually, I guess, Crystal, I don't have any cards for not-on-the-agenda items. Is there anybody who wishes to adjust the council on the item not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the next item, which is item 4A, new business. Consideration of accepting a report and discussing proposed plans with San Carlos School District regarding acquisition/disposal of North Crestview Park, APN 049-041-050, approximately 700 feet south of Club Drive, a portion of Tierra Linda Middle School, APN 045-072-020, 750 Dartmouth Avenue, a portion of Arundel School, APN 049-294-020, also APN 049-323-340, APN 049-302-020, and APN 049-293-010 at 200 Arundel Road, and a portion of Heather Elementary School, APN 050-180-010 at 2757 Melendi Drive. Jeff, I think you have a staff report for us.
I do. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, good evening. Jeff Malphey, City Manager. My report will be brief this evening. Just wanted to provide an opportunity for the council and the public to hear about some of the deal points that were agreed upon last week between the city and the school district. It's important to note that these deal points that were reached are not an agreement between the city and the school district, but rather important economic points that would be included in a future agreement that would need to be developed and ultimately voted on by both the San Carlos City Council and the San Carlos School District. But those points, as have been widely reported on, include, and are subject to ultimately an election process. So we've got the public hearing, protest hearing, happening tonight. Other subsequent items, should the protests be overruled, that would begin to move towards the November election, that would require 50 percent plus one of voters in San Carlos approval before the North Crestview Park site could be used for a future park site or any other site other than a municipal park here in San Carlos. The city would deed, under these economic points that have been discussed, the city would deed the school district the land for the North Crestview Park site, approximately four acres. The district would then, the city would have deeded the North Crestview Park site rather, and the district would deed to the city four acres of land at the upper Tierra Linda Middle School campus. The district would also deed to the city 2.9 acres of open space behind Heather Elementary School, often known to the public here in San Carlos as the Heather Dog Park. And the city owns a portion of that property. There's a trail that weaves through there that's actually mostly on school district property, right, as it exists today. The district also has agreed that they would contribute $1.5 million towards the construction of an athletic field on the property behind the Tierra Linda Middle School campus, in which they, the school district, would then try to recover from sports groups in the community, to which they've already had several meetings and gotten commitments from a number of sports groups that they could raise that money over a certain number of years. The city would fund any costs for the improvement to the backside of TL above and beyond the $1.5 million that we'd get from the school district. We believe that, you know, an estimate of just what it would cost to put a field in there is approximately $3 million, but then, of course, there would be additional space that the council, this council or other councils in the future, may want to further develop the park site to include such things as playgrounds, improved parking, gymnasium, pool. There's room for a lot of different tennis courts, other amenities, not all those amenities, but at least one other significant amenity other than a field and parking and restroom, which is going to initially be what would be planned for that TL park site. The district would, in addition, would ensure no development would take place for a 10-year period of time on the existing Heather Athletic Field, which is a grass field. They have asked that that would be subject to a five-year joint review to make sure that there aren't any issues with that field at the time. Both jurisdictions would share equally in the proceeds of any of the parcels that we've talked about here, either Heather, North Crestview, or Tierra Linda, should either the school district or the city choose in the future to try to liquidate and sell off any of that land for development purposes. Both sides would have to agree to that and then would share equitably in whatever the proceeds were. Both jurisdictions would share the cost for an upcoming election. Again, I would point out that this doesn't constitute an agreement. It constitutes the significant points that would be included in an agreement that has not been developed yet. There's a lot of legal language and a lot of other technical and administrative details that would be important to both the school district and the city before an agreement could be prepared. The staffs from both agencies have begun to work through some of those details, based on the direction that we were given the last couple of weeks from both our City Council and the school board to their staff, as these deal points were identified and agreed upon. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about where we're at in that discussion process, and the city attorney's here as well, so we can talk about these deal points or the process to date in general.
Thank you, Jeff. Are there questions for staff?
Just a brief question to clarify for the public. So you said this isn't a deal, it's tentative. Can you talk about what you would see as the potential timeline if we decided to move forward, just so folks know what the steps in the process would be, and provide a bit more detail?
Sure. There's basically two different tracks happening. There's a legal process identified under the Parks Protection Act, and the city attorney can probably speak to this more coherently than I can, but that legal process has to do strictly with North Crestview, which is identified as a park in San Carlos. And that designation has, carries with it, certain legal weight and legal requirements that the city must go through if it wanted to do anything else, including selling it for housing purposes, or selling it to the school district, or whatever. Anything other than a park, there's a very prescriptive process under the law to go through. The process has started where the council had set a protest hearing. That protest hearing is happening tonight, as you can see from the audience behind me and upstairs. Basically, the council will be required, under that item, to, on a four-fifths vote, overturn the protests. If that does occur tonight, then the council, on a normal majority, three-fifths vote, set an election for November. So those items are agendized tonight to move the process forward. The agreement, in reaching an actual formal agreement, is not really tied to the election. I mean, it could happen before the election, it could happen after the election, is not a requirement of the election. In my estimation, I believe that probably September, October would be a realistic timeframe for a formal agreement to be considered by both bodies, based on some of the major deal points that have already been identified and agreed upon between the school district and the city. Thanks.
Ron, I think you said you had a question?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff, let's assume for a minute that the, there is a four-fifths vote tonight, and we proceed with setting an election and all that happens. On Election Day, if I walk into the voting booth, what do I see on the ballot, and what do I see that assures me that the North Crestview Site Park is going to be deeded over the school district for building a school? How do I know that?
I will let the city attorney answer that question.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Collins, well, I think I'm going to be prepared to talk about that on the next agenda item, or even the ordinance that's before you tonight. But in general, the ballot question that's on the ballot is going to be, is basically set by law and by the Government Code Section 38440 statutory language that sets both the procedure and constrains the language that can be on the ballot question. I did touch on in my staff report that there is a possibility that the council could add, at its July 14th meeting, should we go forward with this, an advisory measure that might help clarify that. Also, on July 14th, and as part of the ordinance you're looking at tonight, there's some language about ballot arguments, and the council could authorize some of the council members to write ballot arguments in favor. But I have to tell you, the ballot question is a simple question for this park abandonment issue. It simply relates to, shall the city council adopt an ordinance discontinuing and abandoning North Crestview, the use of North Crestview Park? And it's a very simple ballot question, and that's the statutory language that we're recommending.
I can wait for the rest of your explanation when that item comes up.
Other questions for staff? Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. I have three comment cards, I think. Yes, three. So I'll call names two at a time, ask you to come up and address the council. We do limit our speakers to two minutes each. I'll hold up a yellow card when you have about 15 seconds left, so you know to start wrapping up. I'll hold up a red card, or a pink card, I suppose, when you're at the two-minute mark. I do, since I'm sure we have some folks here tonight who have not attended council meetings recently, we do ask that people refrain from clapping, cheering, booing, doing anything else to express support or opposition to comments, just because if you were up there speaking, you'd like the same consideration being given to you. And actually, I will say that people have been great about that in all the prior hearings we've had on this matter, so I don't anticipate a problem. So we'll start off with Judith Selvage and Mark Federighi. I would be happy to do that. In that case, it will be Judith Selvage, followed by Justin Bailey.
In April, the City Council was presented with a proposal for a swap, which the City Council voted down. The one that we're seeing tonight in draft form is essentially the same with a few tweaks. The technical term in the development world is lipstick on a pig. They have the same, it has the same shortcomings, plus a couple of new ones we've identified, which I'll speak of now. The first is that after asking the school district in March for information on the appraisals for the properties that are being considered, those appraisals and the assumptions were made public a week or so ago. And we learned that North Crestview Park has been evaluated, has been valued, as has Tierra Linda, the Tierra Linda Backlot, as if single-family houses were being built on those properties, and the single-family houses were worth the same, whether they were on the Tierra Linda Backlot or on the North Crestview Unique Open Space with Panoramic Views site. So we questioned the validity of those cost comparisons. Another factor came up recently at a school district open board meeting. And that had to do with the cost of preparing the land for a potential school on North Crestview Park open space versus on the Tierra Linda Backlot. And the report from their, the school district's construction, chosen construction company, was that the cost on North Crestview Park would be an additional $1.5 million more to place the school than if it were put on the Tierra Linda lot. When a school board member raised a question about this amount, the school district's answer was, the question was, can we afford this? The school district's answer was, we have a $9 million budget for this project, so we can afford an extra $1.3 million for the site preparation. Ladies and gentlemen, that 1.5 million is real money. It's not just an entry in a accounting form on a budget. This is money that the San Carlos taxpayers will be paying back, along with the rest of the funds from the $73 million bond issue, with interest, over the next 35 years. So, members of the council, it was a bad deal for the city before, it's a bad deal now for both the city and for the school district. They'll be spending money that they should spend elsewhere. That represents about 75 percent of the money that the--
Judith, would you please wrap up?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mark. That SCIF raises every year for the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith. Justin Bailey.
Great, thank you. I just want to thank some of my other supporters of the Let Us Vote initiative here for giving up their seats to allow some of our senior citizens to sit down. I think that was very good of them to do. I would just like to say my support of this issue, obviously, which, as you can see, there's been a lot of misinformation coming out about what's going on here, one piece of which is that this is only for Charter Learning Center. And of course, this initiative and opening up this land to allow a school there would help alleviate overcrowding for all of our San Carlos schools, which I think is, since the block of people who have children attending San Carlos schools comprises the majority of our taxpaying dollars, I think that is an amazing thing to think about, and I think a very large benefit that would come out of repurposing what I'm looking at, that doesn't look like a park right now, in exchange for inconveniencing a minor few with some congestion of traffic at some times of the day. So just to wrap that up, I think what this issue actually is about is just the idea of not allowing a vocal minority to keep the public's voice from being heard. And so I would encourage everybody that's up here to please allow us to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council on this item? All right. Yes.
I submitted a card, so I'm not sure what had transpired. My name is Don Urein. I'm a 68-year-old senior, one of the perhaps vocal minority, maybe not. I moved into La Bontana community nearby the Crestview Park after a spinal cord injury forced a lifestyle change for me. I was attracted to the area because of its tranquil nature, its great views, had lots of open space, parks, little noise, little traffic, due to restricted access, I might add, and predominantly inhabited by seniors, and plan to live the rest of my days there. If this rezoning plan goes through, and I'm not involved in the functional details of whether it makes sense from a business standpoint or not, I'm not smart enough to have checked that out, but the thing I'd ask is, it will change the entire nature of that area. I have no doubt about that. The questions I have are, is that a wise thing to do? Is it a legal thing to do? I don't know the answers, but I certainly hope that you gentlemen will look into those thoroughly. Why are city officials allowing a school to be built in a remote location? I don't quite understand that. How can a school that is difficult for students, parents, and teachers to be reached be in a good location? How can building a school in a predominantly senior area be a wise thing to do? Why are city officials deviating from a general plan that listed that as a park? Is that legal? And why have a general plan at all, if you're simply going to deviate from it? I appreciate your time. I'm not against good schools. I have two grandchildren growing up here, and I want good schools. I just want them in a good location. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council?
If we could, I think people are starting to get confused about which item's which.
Why don't you?
Sure. This item that's on the agenda right now is discussing some of the deal points that have been reached between the city and the school district that are not up for a vote tonight. They're just on for discussion, really by way of trying to help provide some detail and some background to you, the audience. The next item is the protest hearing item, where I think the majority of people are here to speak on, where the council will be taking a vote and action. So if that clears it up.
I think quite adequately. Is there anybody who would still wish to address the council on the item, the item having to do with the terms of the deal? If you fill out, you can fill out a card after you speak.
Thank you for letting me speak. In reviewing the deal that I just heard about in Mr. Malphey's explanation, it seems to me that it would be very possible, not probable, but possible, for this deal to go through the school district, go up to that property, and decide, oh, it's too expensive, or it's too hard to build here, let's sell it. If that were to take place, the city would automatically lose, and the school district would automatically gain half of the value of that property in a sale. That just doesn't seem right. It seems like an instant moneymaker for the school district, and worse for the city. I don't like it.
Thank you. If you'd please fill out a card, I'd appreciate that. I saw one other hand going up. Yes?
Thank you for letting me speak. I went to the park yesterday, actually. I have a child who goes to San Carlos School. And what was really sad for me to see was, it's a dirt lot, it is a lot, it's not a park. The incline to get to it, I was having a hard time getting up just to see the piece of property. And what keeps coming up, and people bring up this discussion, is the money. And where's the school going to put the property for children to go to? I think it's important to know that if the school property doesn't go here, there really isn't any pieces of land for schools to build on. The other two options is building on top of existing greenfields that are in our school's district, and in the school. For instance, Heather has a greenfield, the only one, for all the children to go to when they play outside. And that's one of the other possible options if this doesn't pass. So for me, the question's not whether we're going to leave a piece of dirt or build a school there, it's whether we're going to build a school on a piece of dirt, or build a school on top of existing greenlands for our community. Another thing I want to mention, I've been reading a lot of articles against the swap. And in the same paragraph, I read a lot of people mention that financially, it's worth a different amount. And then at the same time, they talk about how our older community is second to our children, and that developers would pay more. Are our children less to us then, than the developers? Are we putting developers, then elderly, then our children? It's interesting that both points are made constant in every piece of document I've seen against the swap. And I think it's important to know that the city can also sell this park to a developer, whereas the school, if they made the swap, there is nowhere else for the school to go. We have voted, there is money dedicated to the school. It, thank you. And that is the plan. And it's important to notice that the city can also sell this lot. It's not just something a school can do. Thank you.
Are there others that wish to address the council? I'm going to remind everybody of what Jeff just said, because, and I realize that what happens is people hear somebody say something that's a little bit off-topic, and they feel they want to respond. This item is on the terms of the deal, not the protest hearing, not the-- I'm sorry?
Could you speak a little louder?
I'll try. Thank you. This item is on the terms of the deal, not on the protest hearing, not on the concept, I guess, for lack of a better term, of the transaction. And so if we are going to have any other comments on this item, I would very much appreciate if people would stick to that. There will be plenty of opportunity to talk on the other, on the more general topics, and about people's opposition or support for the concept at the, at the item 5A, which is the very next item on the agenda. I also should add, for the benefit of folks who came late to the meeting, we do have some overflow rooms. We do have a rule that if you don't have a seat, you can't be in this room. That's a fire code rule. There's a room up in 207, which is on the second floor of City Hall, up the stairs back here. There's also a room over at the Adult Community Center. Both are equipped with audiovisual connections, Jeff, to this, so you can hear what's going on. Both are set up so that if you wish to speak, we will, you can submit your comment cards, and staff will make sure that we get them, and that you get down here and get your chance to speak. But if you don't have a seat in this room, I'd have to ask you to pick one of those other two rooms and move there.
I was upstairs, and you never called my name, so now you speak.
Did you submit a card on item 4A?
I did.
On 4A?
What's that?
On item 4A.
I'm not sure what you called it.
That's probably why you didn't get called, because I think by default, Jeff will talk to you. So by default, we were assuming if people didn't specify, they were talking about item 5A, which is the next item on the agenda. So are there any other comments on 4A, the terms of the deal? Crystal, do we know if there's anybody in the overflow rooms that wants to talk on 4A? Okay. In that case, and pending if this gentleman actually was wishing to speak on 4A, we'll invite him back in, any discussion amongst the council. All right, then we will move on to item 5A. Item 5A is a public hearing to hear and pass upon all protests regarding the proposed discontinuance and abandonment of the use of North Crestview Park, an approximately 4.0-acre parcel owned by the City of San Carlos, located on the west side of Crestview Drive, approximately 700 feet south of Club Drive, 336 to 364 Crestview Drive, APN 049-041-050, and to consider a resolution overruling all protests opposing the discontinuance of the use of the real property as a public park. Greg, something told me you were going to be speaking to us on this.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I think, for the benefit of the public, I'll summarize the staff report, and then talk a little bit about some other issues. So tonight's matter that you're considering here is set forth in Government Code Section 38440 at SEC, and that is a series of code sections that govern how a city, if it decides to do so, can abandon a public park and discontinue its use. The process-- The process, it comes from a 1949 law when the state reorganized the state government, and this law came into effect during that time. There might be an earlier version of the law that applied, but I wasn't able to find that in my legislative history review of it. So the procedure, we followed the procedure required by Government Code Section 38440 through today. We adopted the resolution of intention on May 27th. We posted the park. We published the resolution, and we set the protest hearing. And so tonight, we're here for the protest hearing. The protest hearing had to occur between 30 and 60 days from that resolution of intention. We're within that time window. There's been some discussion, and it came up at an earlier meeting, about the legality of the, of the resolution of intention regarding the disposition of the park. I'm confident that we applied the proper standard and proper rules to that, notwithstanding some comments that you probably will hear later tonight. And the law's not, doesn't have a set standard of how you overrule protests or uphold the protests. In our case, upholding the protests would be not passing the resolution that I've prepared for you. It requires a four-fifths vote of the council. The law actually says two-thirds, but in a council with five members, it's going to require four of you to move the process forward. What that does, if you, if you did overrule the protests, that enables you to, it's not required, but it enables you to move to the next item on the agenda, which is the proposed ordinance. So protests are, have to have been received by the city clerk before the hearing started tonight. So, and the law requires that they be written. We've received over 600 written protests for this item. And my read of the law, it doesn't have a standard of how many protests, but only one was actually required to set that. But we have obviously a large turnout of people who are interested in this item. And so the notice, obviously, that we provided was effective to get the public out, to provide protests in writing before the hearing and actually to participate in the public hearing tonight. The staff report also includes reference to the Environmental Quality Act and our position on where we are in that process. We believe that this is a, the decision you're making tonight is exempt for a number of reasons. I have a special, our special counsel here tonight to answer any questions in particular you might have about CEQA. The, again, I'm going to underline that we don't have an agreement yet. We have a series of deal points that we hope to be able to incorporate into an agreement, but it's a complex agreement. It's a separate process from what you're considering tonight. I mean, I think that's the key point I want to make sure everybody understands. You're not deciding on the agreement, potential agreement, anything to do with what's going to go on the park site. Tonight, you're here, on this item, you're considering the protests. If you overrule the protests with the requisite four-fifths vote, you can move to the next step. That's the next agenda item. I'll be reporting on that should the council overrule the protests. And with that, I will be available to answer any questions for the council. I know we did receive a letter that arguably could be considered a protest because it came on Thursday. We received a letter from an attorney. What I just want to caution on that is because it's the letter, I'm interpreting the letter as threatening litigation if you take a certain action. Some of, I'll be, I will be constrained, and our special counsel will be constrained on responding directly to certain types of questions. But questions, and we'll evaluate the questions as we go. I don't want to predict what they would be. But those, sometimes questions are, would engender advice from me as the city attorney or advice from our special counsel that's privileged. And under the law, that's something that I recommend strongly that we do in closed session. So we might not be able to answer every single question or nuance of a question, but we'll try our best to, in a public meeting context, to be able to answer any of your questions about procedure or process and where we are.
Questions for Greg? Yes, Matt?
I have a question regarding, sorry. I have a question regarding the paragraph you have about CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. And you're saying that discontinuance and abandonment of the park does not trigger CEQA according to certain codes and guidelines and so forth.
It's where we are now, is what I'm saying. CEQA will be required at some point in the future, a more thorough review when we have a project.
You're jumping ahead of me there. What I'm talking about is just to consider abandonment. Because when I review our general plan, there's, you know, as you know, there's different categories. Like, for instance, one of the things we're not dealing with tonight would be the housing element. That's in our general plan, but we're not touching that. But what we are touching is the inventory and, you know, the amount of open space we have, park space that we have, potentially the traffic and circulation part of our general plan, and then just the part of the general plan that touches on traffic and circulation. Because, maybe you can help me out here, it seems to me if we're abandoning a park, then we're opening it up to some kind of development. We don't know, what you're saying is, we're not saying necessarily if we abandon it, that we would open it up to a school, or maybe housing, or it's, the question is still there, right? But it does loosen it up to some degree. So can you explain why that doesn't require any, any type of CEQA action?
Well, Councilman Grocott, I think I'll put it this way. My view of Government Code Section 38440 and the statutory scheme is that this is an extra procedural step before you can get to an agreement or a changing, changing your general plan, changing your zoning ordinance. And the reason I think that is when you look at the statutory scheme, it doesn't make any sense to go through a general plan amendment when the sole question that the council's considering is whether the park should be abandoned or discontinued. Now, the use of the park, the statute contemplates, after the process is over, the city owns the property in fee and can dispose of it in any way that it, that it can dispose of any other city-owned property. So when you combine that together, I'm thinking this is simply that procedural step, that extra protection for parkland. Now, you raise an interesting point. It does not, even if we go through this whole process, it does not guarantee that the property will be developed, sold, disposed of, traded, or anything. That can only be done by an agreement that's going to require a review. And I'm going to bring in the special counsel now to talk about sort of procedurally how we see that would happen, if that's a question you want answered. But I'm thinking, trying to answer your question.
Yeah, you still haven't answered it. Because I see what you're saying is, when you get to the point where you may develop something, you may have to go through an environmental report on that, on whatever that project is. And you're saying, right now, we don't have a project. But on the other hand, the general plan itself, you might say, was a project. It required an environmental impact report to be written for it. Now, we're proposing a change to it by changing the designation of this land from park to land that can be developed. That hits on the general plan, and the, if nothing else, the general plan, if you fly over it at 30,000 feet, one of the things our general plan says, it's a guide for how we develop our town, right? So what it says is, any further major development in the city of San Carlos between now and 2030 will be in areas where we have transportation, infrastructure in place, and we already have density. That's basically what it says. And by going through this process, it seems to me we're loosening up the nuts on that machinery, and we're taking another, we're, by looking at this and even considering it, we're looking at changing the guidelines that are in our general plan.
Well, I think this was touching on the area that I, so I'm going to try and answer it in a general way. We've looked at those issues, and we're pretty confident that we're doing it the right way. I, we've, we don't believe that it makes sense to go through a general plan amendment process for a project that we don't know what it, what it's, it's going to be constituted of, involving three properties in three different areas of town. It's just not possible to, or reasonable to do all that before we decide whether it's even possible through a vote of the people. Very general statement, I understand. But there are, a general plan is a complicated document, and it has a lot of policies in it. And there are policies that support the decision, should you decide to make it tonight, in a general plan.
Greg, you probably didn't see Jeff moving around behind you. I think he had something he wanted to add. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate that. This is a question that's come up many times that I've heard in the last couple of weeks from a lot of different folks, and I think there's just a fundamental misunderstanding that the election doesn't change the general plan. For, for example, if the council, you know, pick your topic, wanted to amend the general plan, have a process to amend the general plan for whatever land use policy that the council was considering, they would, of course, go through a CEQA process to do that, right? That would be the council's right and purview. This park issue, you can't just go do a general plan amendment on. I mean, you can, but it doesn't mean anything because there's a specific law that prevents you from changing the use of the park. So you could rezone it to build, you know, a 100-story building on today. As a council, you could amend the general plan, you could amend the zoning. You still can't use the park for that purpose unless you go through this park process. So all this process does is, is reset, if, should it get on the ballot, should the voter support it, is it then resets the council's ability to do that. So you could turn around and say, you know what? We still want to leave it in the general plan as a park, or, and zone it as a park. It's just, you haven't, you're, you don't have the ability to answer that question like you would on any other land use issue because it happens to be a park and there's a very specific law. So it's, it's our opinion that we're just not at that step yet. But you would have to go through that step before you could change the general plan.
But it is an opinion.
Well, there's, you know, I mean, there's not a lot of case law on this. It's just, there's not a lot out there. We believe we're following the opinions of the Attorney General and the cases that have come before us and examples of how to do this properly, and that this would be the way you would go about doing it. You still have to do CEQA before you can actually make the other decisions. This is just one in a process.
There's an analogy I was going to touch on, and analogies sometimes are not perfect, but if the council were going to abandon a public street, for example, and we don't have to go through an election to do that, but that doesn't change, and that might enable something to happen, but it doesn't change the general plan. The general plan would still have to be changed. So it's, it's, that's why our reasoning is, or our thought on, and why we brought this before you, before you in this sequence, was that this procedural step, because it's complex, and we don't have an agreement in place, we don't have a project that we can bring to show you that we, and because the council direction has been to get, if we're going to possibly get this on the November election, it's, the timeline to do this has to bring it on now. So I do have the CEQA counsel here to talk about some of the, some of the procedural questions that you might have about how she would envision the general plan coming up, if you wanted to hear that.
Additional questions for staff? I had just two, two brief ones. Greg, in terms of our job in, in processing the comments that we'll hear tonight, and in fact, processing the, the protest letters that were received, roughly, by my count, roughly a quarter of the protest letters are from folks that are, who do not live in San Carlos. And they have every right under the law to protest this, the law's quite clear about Do we have, do we, are we required to not distinguish between those two classes of protests, to weigh them differently? I mean, what's our flexibility, if any, there?
The statute unfortunately doesn't provide any specific guidance like that. It just says, overrule the protest, and how you overrule the protests. It says, actually, it says pass on and, and potentially overrule the protests. And so my read on it is that that frees the council to use their own judgment in how to overrule or uphold the protests in your, in your vote decision tonight.
Okay. Fair enough. Other questions for staff? Thank you, Greg. We have, as you, I think as everybody is expecting, we have quite a few comment cards, quite a few people who want to address us, which is fine. I do have a couple of, one more housekeeping reminder, again, for folks who have showed up late. We do have a fire rule here in effect, which is that if you don't have a seat in this, in this particular room, we ask you to go to one of the two overflow rooms, either Room 207 upstairs or the Adult Community Center. You do have a seat. That's fine. Okay. That counts, too. The other housekeeping item that I wanted to do before we go in to start hearing public comment is, I do have, I believe, a speaker card from an attorney representing a group of residents, Tamara Gallanter, Gallanter?
Gallanter.
Gallanter. And in parallel with that, I had a number of requests for individuals who had submitted comment cards who wished to dedicate their time to you so you could speak longer. On the one hand, we don't actually follow that procedure. On the other, we do make allowance for when somebody is speaking on behalf of a group of folks. So I'm not going to have you lead off, if you don't mind. And what I would ask you to do is, how much time do you think you're looking at?
Probably about five minutes, if that's acceptable.
Five minutes is perfectly acceptable. So Tamara Gallanter, followed by Mark Federighi.
Good evening, Mayor Olbert, and members of the city council. My name is Tamara Gallanter. I'm an attorney at Chut Mahali and Weinberger, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Save North Crestview Park. Now, I'm sure some of you know our firm, but for those of you who don't, we're an environmental and land use firm that represents community and environmental groups like Save North Crestview Park. But we also represent public agencies like San Carlos. And in fact, we're the city attorney for two cities, and in Samiteo County, I actually have advised the cities of Pacifica and San Bruno as special land use counsel, and have served as interim assistant general counsel for the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District. So I certainly understand the issues and considerations you face with a decision like this. In addition to all the policy reasons that you've heard so far and will continue to hear regarding why the city should not abandon North Crestview Park, I wanted to address why adopting the proposed resolution and ordinance tonight wouldn't just be bad policy, but would be illegal. Now, I know you've all received our 30-page comment letter, and bravo to those who actually made it through to the last, last page, explaining why this action would be illegal as currently proposed. And of course, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but since my time's limited, let me just quickly highlight why the proposed action not only violates a number of state laws, but laws, but also the terms of a judgment from the Samiteo County Superior Court. So let's start with SEQA, because I think that's a big one, we've already heard about that from your city attorney. And contrary to the conclusions in the staff report and the recitations in the resolutions and the ordinance, the decision by the city council to let voters decide whether or not to abandon North Crestview Park is a SEQA project that requires environmental review. And let me just clarify, it's not, it's not true that if the voters vote to abandon the park, the city council could still decide to just leave it as a park. The park abandonment statute actually says that once the voters vote to abandon the park, the city shall adopt an ordinance to abandon the park. So really, this is your last opportunity to make a decision as a, as a legislative body about whether the park is to be abandoned. After this, it's just, it's left to the voters, which is fine, but if you're making a decision to put this on the ballot and let the voters decide, then it is a SEQA project and you must conduct environmental review now, not after it's been put on the ballot. I wanna turn next to the general plan and the question of, well, when do you do your general plan amendment? And I certainly understand, you know, the dilemma here, right? It's like you don't know what your voters are gonna decide, and yet you have to make a decision about what your general plan will say. Right now, it's really clearly says, "City Park." And if the voters vote to abandon it, then it should say, "Not a City Park." And it's not only the council that has to act consistently with its general plan, which is the constitution for all land use decisions, but the voters as well. And so what that means is that neither the council nor the voters can act inconsistent with the general plan. And that's why initiative after initiative has been found illegal when it amends, for example, a land use, or says we're going to abandon something, and yet doesn't change the general plan at the same time. So that general plan amendment needs to occur now. Now, it can occur, I mean, I've worked with, with cities where it's done in the conditional. In other words, you have a general plan amendment that really only goes into effect upon a vote by the voters to abandon the park site. And then it could be, you know, it could be a holding zone at that time. But right now, the proposal before you, which is to abandon the park, is inconsistent not only with the specific designation as a city park, but also with numerous policies that call not for abandoning parks, but actually for increasing parks and improving parks and actually having a connection, a trail connection from this very park to the surrounding open space, which would be impossible once that park is no longer a park and is abandoned. Also, I know that it's been discussed about the legality of the original resolution that started off this, this process. And I too have looked at the legislative history, and I think that, you know, that your city attorney and I are just gonna have to respectfully disagree, because in my mind, the city has not complied with a statute that specifically governs abandonment of parks. So in order, that statute was written so that in order to ensure that the public has the information it needs to make, an informed decision regarding whether or not to protest abandonment of a park, the statute requires cities to identify what they intend to do with the park in the resolution that begins the abandonment process. And here, and I understand there's a lot of time pressures, but because the city was in such a hurry to accommodate the school district's schedule, it rushed to start the abandonment process before knowing what it would do with the property. And now you need to go back and start again with-
Tamara, I'm sorry, just, you're at about plus six minutes. How much more time do you think you need?
Well, I have a finally coming up. Should I skip to that?
No, I'm just asking how much more time you'd like.
Probably about thirty seconds.
Fine.
So it, it needs to go back and identify what the park is gonna be used for so that those protests can adequately reflect the intended use of the park and not just the fact that it could be sold, exchanged, leased, or otherwise disposed of. And finally, the city can't take any action that would lead to abandonment of the park without first receiving the approval of the Samiteo County Superior Court. Park was, it was designated as a city park on the development plan, and pursuant to the terms of the court, court judgment, the Samiteo County Superior Court must approve any changes to that development plan. So I'd just like to finish by urging the city council to refuse to override the more than six hundred protests, both because the plan before you was a bad idea and bad policy, but also it will be, it would be illegal and subject the city to a potential litigation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you, Tamara. Mark Federighi, followed by Bonnie McClure.
Good evening. My name is Mark Federighi. I've actually, was born and raised here in San Carlos. And throughout my adult career, I've had the opportunity to live all over the United States, should I choose, but upon the birth of our first son, decided to move back to San Carlos because of the great schools, the great community programs, the sports for kids, et cetera, that I grew up with while, while growing up here in San Carlos. I'll tell you, the decision between, before the council is a big one. It affects the generations now and the generations of our future. Will San Carlos be known for a great place for public infrastructure, schools, parks, youth sports programs? Or will it be known for a city that struggles to fulfill the needs of the majority of its citizens? That's the question that really will be decided by this issue. It impacts all of us, regardless of your position on the matter. Property values, tax revenues, future city projects, all affected by this, based on those things. If San Carlos fails to meet the demands of the growing family community, home values, desirability to live here will diminish, again, affecting all of us. A case in point, San Carlos High School closure seemed right at the time. Maybe now some of us might think that might have been short-sighted. Now we have a capacity issued at our local high schools. Just think of how much better and closer our community could be with that high school still operational today. The decision that you all must make is a similar one to that of the gravity of the high school closure. It affects the communities, families, again, land values, and our youth programs. There are many people who support the land swap, many who don't. Rather than the five council members trying to decide the fate of the twenty-nine thousand citizens of the city, why not let them vote for themselves? Six hundred people protested, twenty-five percent of them not from San Carlos. I find that interesting. Don't make the same mistakes that a similar board made thirty years ago regarding the high school. We have plenty of open space, but not enough space for our schools and fields. Please put aside any personal differences and feelings on the matter and let the citizens of San Carlos vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Bonnie McClure, followed by Bob Black.
Good evening, honorable members of the city council. I'm Bonnie McClure, a resident and representative of the Sierra Club. From its founding a hundred and twenty-two years ago, the Sierra Cubs' heart and soul has been our regard for and protection of open spaces, the flora and fauna that inhabit them, and the balm that those spaces give to the citizens of all ages that visit these places. We have three hundred and seventy-five members in the city of San Carlos, and we believe that a substantial majority of them are of a like mind. The Sierra Club's Loma Prieta chapter and the subsidiary San Carlos Belmont Group, speaking as the authorized voice of the Sierra Club as a whole, protest the San Carlos City Council's pending decision to seek the permission of the voters of San Carlos to abandon the parkland designation currently protecting North Crestview Park. At the request of our chapter leadership, I have been asked to state that the Sierra Club hereby incorporates by reference all of the points put forward in the letter from Attorney Tamara Gallanter of Shoot, Mulanee &amp; Weinberger dated June twenty-six, two thousand and fourteen, and addressed to the San Carlos City Council. In particular, we wish to express our concern that the city council appears to be contemplating putting this measure on the ballot without performing a SEQA analysis, which is required by law, and most pointedly by the Friends of Sierra Madre California Supreme Court decision of two thousand and one. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Bonnie. Bob Black, followed by Valerie Keller.
Thank you, Mayor Olbert and members of the city council. I'm Bob Black, longtime resident. As our city attorney said, the resolution that is before us this evening does not specify what will happen to North Crestview Park if the resolution passes. If through some totally unforeseen and suddenly occurring circumstance, the city council found that in the best interest of the city, North Crestview Park should not be transferred to the school district, council could decide to put North Crestview Park to some alternative use. Now, this scenario seems highly unlikely, but that is the essence of a disaster. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Valerie Keller, followed by Louis Humm.
First, I'd like to communicate my confidence that Mr. Rubens can advise the city properly on this matter. He's done so before, and he's very good at what he does. I have several thoughts to share tonight. I'm in favor of the land swap, but I will not be affected by the outcome either way. My first thought is for those opposed to the land swap. I can understand why you would not want the construction of a school, but I can also tell you I know many of the administration's staff and teachers at the Charter Learning Center, and I cannot imagine more responsible, more caring, or considerate neighbors. My second thought is for the parents of Heather's school. I understand you might not want a K-8 school joining you on your K-4 campus, but I've also experienced how Edison-Montessori preschool, a K-8 school and a middle school can coexist on the TL campus, and it works very well. My most important message, however, is to the city council. I call upon the elected members to say it is your obligation, perhaps even your duty, to allow the people of the city to vote on an issue as important as this. It is unconscionable to deprive the citizens of San Carlos the basic right to vote. And my final thought is this: if by some chance this land swap cannot be worked out with the school district, I encourage the city council to begin looking at the Crestview property for either low-income housing or a new sports complex. The peninsula is woefully lacking in low-income housing, and the city badly needs playing fields and courts. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Louis Humm, followed by Mike Donahue. Crystal, is Louis coming from one of the rooms? We will put his card aside and come back to it. Mike Donahue, followed by Ellen Salisbury.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. So I wanted to first say thanks for continuing to work with the school district on this, the work that the city's done. For me, this is a community-wide issue, and I hope that you'll let the community vote. I think you've got some pretty clear feedback recently in the community survey, that two out of the top four items identified in that survey were to relieve traffic congestion, that was number one. Number four was to improve and increase access to parks and recreation facilities. In addition to that, we know that the school district projects over twenty percent growth in the next five to seven years. So this is a community issue for us. This plan helps us address all of those issues. If we don't move forward with this plan, all of those things will probably get worse. And I appreciate the need for open space. I'm a member of several open space organizations, but we're blessed with over nine hundred acres of nearby open space that's easily accessible. So I think that the best use for this property is to address those community needs, and I hope you give us the opportunity to vote on it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Ellen Salisbury, followed by Adam Malami.
Thank you, Mayor Olbert and city council. My name is Ellen Salisbury, and I'm a four-year resident of San Carlos, and in fact, I live in the Crestview Estates. And in fact, my property abuts, that property, that's my house right there. So just keep that in mind. This is really a procedural issue, and this is a request to you, Mayor Olbert, and to you, Cameron. Please stop saying that this is a win-win for all of the community. This is not a win-win for all of the community of San Carlos. I am a resident of San Carlos. My other friends here, who are residents of Crestview Estates, are residents of San Carlos, and there's no win in this for me or for us. I can look out that window, and I can see trees, deer, rabbits, quail, all kinds of natural things. That will be gone if the school is put there. In addition, according to some real estate experts, the value of our homes in Crestview Estates and in La Ventana across the street will be dramatically decreased, especially for those of us, about eight of us, who abut this park. So there's no win in this for me. I understand the need for schools. I lived across the street from a neighborhood school in Wayland, Massachusetts, and a neighborhood school was a delightful thing because it attracted the children. They could walk to school, they could ride their bikes, they could play in the playgrounds. There are no children up here, very few children, to take advantage of this school. It is not a neighborhood school. It is not an asset to the community. So for this to be abandoned as a park, we lose our park, and those of us in Crestview get nothing in return. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Adam Malami, followed by Paul Max Payton.
I'm speaking in favor of the swap. I think as an overall tenor of the, of the comments that you're hearing this evening, on the one side, you have people who are concerned about expanding, reducing crowding in schools, improving the town schools in general, improving athletic facilities. These are all, I would say, pretty noble and lofty goals for the town. On the con side, you have some neighbors who, you know, feel they will be negatively impacted. They raise concerns about traffic congestion based on their Stop the Swap website, concerns about lack of transparency in the city dealings. When you weigh the merits of those two different sides, I think from my point of view, it's, it's clear to me which side I would rather be on. And I'd just like to address a couple of the comments that I heard earlier. I understand from what I heard that the city received a thirty-page letter from an attorney threatening litigation on June twenty-sixth, which would be last Thursday. To me, receiving a thirty-page letter four days ago, you know, I can't say speak to the merits of it, but to me, receiving a letter in that timeframe sounds more like intimidation than anything else. I'll just stop there.
Thank you, Adam. Paul Max Payton, followed by Gene Chakona.
So I've appeared before you, this is probably my fifth time. I'm not gonna talk about legality, I'm not gonna talk about money, I mean, there, people here are far more experts than I am on that. My personal investment is, my wife and I moved into that unit, which is at the very bottom, you can see the chimney extending there. We moved in July two thousand and nine, and the open area was certainly a selling point. I, I looked at it, and I thought it was very charming, and it didn't really register with me until April of two thousand and ten, where I was working around the unit that we have, and I noticed that there was a really interesting sort of glowing effect coming from the window in our landing. And it really struck me, and I thought I'd left the light on. That was kind of fun. And I wrote something about that. So I'm not gonna appeal to money, I'm not gonna appeal to legality, I'm gonna, what I'm gonna read to you is a personal feeling. And that is, in the waning moments of light- of light, fingers of day graze nearby meadow. Faint sun rays skim and scur through flats and fields, playing pastoral peekaboo. Soft beams lays low, casting a golden glow. Raining wheat streaks through a landing pane. Thin amber tendrils glance against pale walls, filling ignored space with warmth. Silent consecration. Nature has ennobled my ordinary home." That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Paul. Jean Chakona, followed by Steve Fink.
Good evening, Mayor Albert and City Council. My name is Jean Chakona. I've been a resident of San Carlos for 30 years. I'm speaking tonight in defense of maintaining North Crestview Park solely as a park and not abandoning these four acres in any land swap or for development. The city of San Carlos is losing its park acreage. Every year, as the population increases, we lose more. For the city of San Carlos website numbers, park allotment land is stated as 2.5 acres per 1,000 people. As of 2007, we were already deficient in parkland by 5.5 acres. In 2013, we are deficient by 10 acres. If North Crestview is abandoned, that'll be 14 acres. As of 2020, the projection with increased population and loss of North Crestview would be a 24-acre deficiency. In addition, I'm protesting the way that this decision to abandon the park is being quickly pushed through by some of the City Council in closed-door sessions with the San Carlos School District, ignoring that the school district does not have a good track record of maintaining its land thoughtfully or effectively in the past, giving up some of its schools and selling off school land. Now the school district, with apparently no more usable land left and without thorough study or funds, has its eyes on the city's under-allotted parkland. We need to plan carefully for our future. For example, as the foster city San Mateo School District has done at their Audubon School by building a two-story school on an existing footprint, it's time to build up to accommodate our growing school population and keep our remaining parks intact. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Steve Fink, followed by Mary Lou Loras?
Lathrop.
Lathrop, sorry. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'll be speaking off the cuff, which is a horrible mistake. I should warn you in advance. I would like to say that this is a very important decision. It has a lot of impact on the future of the city, and I believe there are good points on both sides. Traffic will be affected negatively in the area. I totally believe that. On the other hand, I've attempted to drive through San Carlos Avenue on a number of occasions, and at the moment, that's a pretty much impassable part of the day. So really, it's a trade-off. Some people are going to suffer. Some people are going to gain. But the question before the City Council tonight is, who should make these decisions, these critical decisions to the future of the city? There are people who will suffer as a result of any abandonment of the park. There are many more people in the city who will gain. It's hard to say who's going to suffer more, who's going to gain more. But decisions like this, I believe, should not be left up to procedural details or whatever. Sorry, I'm an engineer. I don't have a lot of patience with these types of things. I think you do have to look at your goals, what you want the city to look like, how you want to grow. We are a growing city. There are more and more children. The schools are getting more and more crowded. At the same time, it really does seem unfair to people who moved into an area and with the expectation of a certain character of the neighborhood. I can understand that. At the same time, I've lived three different places in San Carlos. That means I had two opportunities to get out, and I didn't take either one of them because I do enjoy living in the city, and a lot of that is because of the school system. And so there are many people who do stand to gain from this abandonment, and I urge you to allow the voters to make the decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Mary Lou Lathrop, followed by Matt Coit.
Mayor Albert and City Council, I have been a San Carlos resident for 41 years, and I do oppose the abandonment of North Crestview Park. For 40 years, North Crestview Park has been a unique open space park at the top of San Carlos with panoramic views and abundant wildlife. I urge you to help us preserve this local open space for future generations. Once it's gone, it's gone forever. Do those last words sound familiar? This was also the motto of the Mid Peninsula Open Space District during their campaign for the recently passed Measure AA. You may be interested to know that four out of five members of the San Carlos School Board endorsed Measure AA, as did three of the five City Council members. Did they have a mental asterisk to their endorsement? Did they mean preserve local open space for future generations unless the school district wants to take it? Don't go back on the open space promise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Matt Coit, followed by Alex Saunders.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Matt Coit. I'm a 16-year resident of San Carlos and also the chairman of the Board of Directors of Charter Learning Center. This issue may look like it's about the CLC, but the question is actually much bigger than any one charter school. Charter is, as I've said before at earlier meetings here, the movable piece within the school district's facilities puzzle. CLC has worked closely with the district for the past two years, looking to try to find a site to move CLC as part of the district's overall facility plans, and the Crestview parcel is the best overall possible solution that we've found to this. I wanted to thank the council and the school district for all the work that you've done together to reach a tentative deal. Tonight, it's important to remember, though, that this issue is larger than the charter school, and it's larger than any one neighborhood. This is about citywide traffic and circulation. It's about safe routes to school. This is about school growth, athletic fields, and keeping San Carlos a true city of good living. I urge you tonight to override the protests that you're receiving, and on behalf of all of the people of San Carlos, the San Carlos electorate, I urge you to let the people vote.
Thank you, Matt. Alex Saunders, followed by, we have two speakers up on the follow-by, Claire Donahue and Annika
My name is Alex Saunders, and I've been a resident of the city of good living for 32 years. In fact, I bought my property in Crestview Park 32 years ago on the basis of its surroundings and my hearing that the Crestview Park initial owners had deeded this park to the city as an open space at the time. So my concern is that the city of good living may, at this point, become the city of reneging, and that's something that the councilor is really due need to consider. My reason for objecting or protesting is partly that it will diminish the value of my property, and partly that I will no longer be able to walk on this park because I do so very often. And I haven't heard anybody else say that, but many of us do, in fact, walk and enjoy that park. The other thing I'd like to just propose is that if by some real mistake this property is going to be developed, the environmental impact study should include the impact of how to use Lot G, which is part of the almost-adjacent property. It's across the street that you see in the picture there. That property could be well-used if the school actually is built there, and it needs to be part of the impact study. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alex. As I mentioned, we have two speakers up next, Claire Donahue and Annika Erickson, followed by Kevin Corley. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Anna. And I'm Claire Donahue. We would like to have a say in our future.
Thank you, Claire and Annika. Next up, Kevin Corley, followed by Matthew Burrows.
Hello, and thank you for letting me speak. There's been a lot of very good and illuminating arguments on both sides, so thank you for adding to this debate. I just wanted to say that I'm a local resident just off-screen there, about a block down from the park on the south, and I just think that while it's easy to look at a place like this and just see a plot of dirt or land that's not really being used, I just think there's a lot of, there are a lot of value to local residents. Like, I think anyone who's been to the city of Manhattan would know how much it would change the character of that area if Central Park were used for development or for other land, and that, you know, I walk there pretty often, and it would be, I think it would definitely change the character of the area. And although I think we can all agree that education is an important, a part of a city's infrastructure, an important institution to invest in, I think it's best to do that in the right way and not just by any means necessary, and to explore all the options available, including things like building up on existing property or exploring areas that are more easily accessible rather than with winding streets and at the top of a hill. I mean, it hasn't been all that long since I was a middle school student myself, and I just know that, you know, you get out at the end of the day, and it can create a lot of congestion and a lot of different traffic problems and really kind of have an impact on a local community. So I just wanted to urge everyone involved to just consider all the options available. And it's true that this is the most, this land is the only one available. Well, that's one thing, but I think there has to be other options and other things to consider besides just going ahead and seeing this is just a worthless piece of property because I can assure you that it's not to the local residents. It has a lot of value, both for the wildlife and for the immediate community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Matthew Burrows, followed by Chris Reimer.
Good evening. I come to you as a 10-year resident of San Carlos, also an eight-year member of the Board for Committee for Green Foothills. So obviously, I'm here to advocate for open space, and the previous speaker, probably way more eloquently than I, expressed a lot of my views, very similar, except for the part of getting out of school just recently. You know, the history of this piece of land, obviously, Committee for Green Foothills was instrumental in creating this. It was put there to mitigate development, not to host development, and this is, you know, one of the things that's come up tonight, I've heard, is that there's 125 out-of-town signatures or protest letters. I think that's indicative of the interest in the environmental community. This is being watched by lots of people. So the other aspect I'd like to ask respectfully is, in your op-ed, I think it was Mr. Collins and Mr. Johnson, your op-ed in the Daily Journal, mentioned some parts of this agreement were to protect open space and trails. And I'm not really exactly sure what parts, the elements of that you're referring to. Perhaps it was the transfer of the dog park. Really not sure what it was, so I'd respectfully like to get some clarification on that at a later time. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Chris Reimer, followed by Alessande Rozinko.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Chris Reimer. I am indeed in favor of the proceeding of the overturn of the protest. I'll be very simple. It's hard to argue with someone like Paul, who spoke of the view that he has from that space. I definitely agree. It's wonderful. One of the reasons that I moved to San Carlos was because of the amazing views we have. I actually bought a house in the White Oaks tract when I'm up on the first rise, so I can really appreciate the significance of a view. The sad reality is that also the reason I moved here is because of the amazing schools that we have and the ability for this community to provide for effectively everybody. And an unfortunate reality is that it's not providing for our students the way that we would like it to, as the school population's gone up significantly. One thing I haven't heard at all is the effort of the people, other than those who live right around it, no doubt, they are going to be impacted, but what about the rest of the community? I haven't heard a whole lot of debate here or even publicly about the alternatives other than this. It's just no. What I would argue for is just allowing the city community to vote. Let us be clear about that. Let the citizens speak. All the while, the residents who are very concerned can continue to have the dialogue that may or may not be occurring about some other alternative spot that seems to apparently exist, which unfortunately does not. There is no other place to put a school. And for those of you who've been paying attention to that reality, it's a very tough one because it means that one community has to suffer while another one benefits. So what I ask for you is to consider allowing the process to proceed, and then I encourage everyone to begin a dialogue rather than to dig in and fight because that is the only way to get community to proceed. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Alessande Rozinko, followed by Andrew Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Councilman. I think I disagree strongly with the last speaker. I think the school district would like you all to believe that there, in fact, are no alternatives, when in fact, there are. Seth Rosenblatt himself specifically told us that land was not the issue. The school district had plenty of land on which to build the school. The issue was traffic, and they merely wanted to spread the traffic issue around without doing anything about it. Also, I have to say that I was really disappointed in the council's op-ed piece when you said that San Carlos was built on families with children. I'm sorry, that means that, does that mean that people who don't have children, or maybe who have children but they're all grown up, need not apply here? After all, you know, more than 33% of the people who have children, there's way more who don't have children. And by the way, the school district didn't mind coming to me when they wanted their Measure H passed and their parcel tax passed, and I had no problem contributing, but I happen to be a member of this community too. And I have to say, Councilman, your op-ed piece was really hurtful. So I would please urge you to not override the protest. Thank you.
Thank you, Alessande. Andrew Taylor, followed by John Buchanan.
Good evening. I have the same, similar issue is, the school district and the citizens of San Carlos supported them on a $72 million bond measure. Yet, I'm still trying to reconcile and been asking questions and still haven't got the answer of why did that not, it made explicit reference to everything was going to be resolved by the $72 million that you got on existing sites. And yet, here, the school district's asking for more land. There was a facilities master plan that was done that they spent thousands of dollars on. There was no mention of needing another site. But more importantly, I think this is also a case of the cart before the horse because now you look at one of the board members' own blog states, "Well, we're going to go through this process, and then the school has, this district has to figure out whether they can even build there because we know that there were, the Army had a base up there, there are possibly fuel tanks. They haven't done any geotechnical studies." So this is just crazy, to go through this process when they don't even know if it's physically possible to even put a school site on that place. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. John Buchanan, followed by Oksana Sorenko.
Mayor and Council, my name
Mayor and Council, my name's John Buchanan. Despite the discussion and rhetoric about a land swap, school needs and sports fields, the issue here tonight is about a ballot measure authorizing the city to abandon a park. And this is what I'm protesting. This is a park that was included in the plan of development for the Highland Park subdivision some 40 years ago, to meet the city's land use ordinances. Ordinances, by the way, that are still in effect today. No one seems to note why the city, and especially the current residents of that subdivision, no longer need nor deserve this park. Whatever the city's motive and rationale is for this, it's not been stated in the measure, and certainly hasn't been discussed or explained in recent discussions of the matter. What happened in 40 years to eliminate the need for the park that the city itself demanded? Instead, we've heard about negotiations and supposed agreements, and earnest intentions to create what Mayor Olbert has called a win-win situation. But intent is not precise definition or commitment of action. Taken at face value, it doesn't appear that you are sure, and I certainly am not either, of what is going to happen with the abandonment. In other words, how does the measure achieve a big win on this? Maybe win-win is simply a artifact of speech that ignores the standing of anyone else in this discussion who may in fact endure a loss. A loss, in this case, of a 40-year-old park that the city at one time at least committed to. Basically, you're abandoning an old, established commitment and trying to replace it with an intent. I don't think that's good policy. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Oksana Sorenko, followed by Karen Molinarie.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak in today. So I have main three bullet points which I would like to address. First of all, here we see two major points of view, and the supporting voice to abandon this park is actually bringing up somewhat unfair tools, like speculating on kids, welfare, and kids kind of growing districts, and so on and so forth. And this actually trying to substitute professional work of school district and also city council to voting the major public and make some decision which actually professionals should have done and should have solved those problems beforehand. So my second bullet point is about the park itself. Actually, this park is one of the most beautiful spots, not only in San Carlos, but in all Bay Area. If people coming from Belmont or San Mateo, they want to bring their guests to this spot to see panoramic view, whether it's developed or not, it doesn't prevent seeing that beautiful view of the bay. And it doesn't need actually to be the only spot which has to be sacrificed on behalf of school district. And my last bullet point is about the precedent. So this is where we're going to do the precedent, where we get some vulnerable minority, people who live in that area and who mostly value that spot, and going to vote probably with more majority of people who have small kids, who didn't pay that much for the price of property in this area, but who would like to take it. Why don't actually take my house, which is also in this area, and my backyard, and build something for the health of the community? I would say it's kind of goes against the values of United States and against the values of this flag we see here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Oksana. Karen Molinarie, followed by Catherine Donahue.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, fellow residents and constituents. I will say again that I really appreciate all the time you, as our public servants, have spent on this issue, and all the time that my fellow residents have spent. It is a testament to the democratic process and people being engaged in their civic community, and that's a great responsibility for all of us to take. I want to tell you that I'm here representing over 1,500 residents who have signed the petition in support of the swap and the ability to vote on this issue. And as you have heard, there are over 600 letters of protest. So together, we're over 2,000 in number of people who are moved or touched to the point of acting on this matter. I know it's complex. It's controversial. There are going to be opponents and supporters. But I really do believe in the democratic process. For an issue of this magnitude, that will have such a long-term impact on our community, we really should put it to the voters. I would also like to state, on some of the comments that have been made this evening, I really would like to ask our residents to come together and not be divisive. For somebody to make a comment that says a school is not an asset just floors me. In this day and age, education is so critical to all of us. Every school, no matter what school it is, and Charter is part of the San Carlos School District and is a public school, is an asset to this community. And every student in this community is an asset to our future. I'd also just like to add that of the 20-plus thousand acres of dedicated open space directly behind North Crestview Park, as well as all of the acres in front of it at Vista Park, on top of the fact that this deal increases the open space, for people to say that they oppose this based on losing open space, and yet not realize that the city is the winner here, with more open space and park space, is ludicrous. I would just ask you to put this to the vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Catherine Donahue, followed by Kevin Statenfield.
Hi, my name is Katie Donahue, and I'm a student at Central Middle School. I'm also a soccer player for San Carlos United. I would like for my parents and other people to be able to vote, because in the future, soccer teams need space to practice and play games, and children need to be active and have life skills, such as teamwork, to use when they grow up and become adults. Thank you for letting me speak, and please let the people of San Carlos vote.
Thank you, Catherine. Kevin Statenfield, followed by Adam Rack.
Hello, my name is Kevin Statenfield, and I'm here to voice my support for the land swap, because it solves several significant problems for our city. Overcrowding of local school sites, traffic mitigation, and addresses the undersupply of field space. Because San Carlos is 99% developed, these are very difficult problems to solve, as we all know. The main topic I want to address is the undersupply of field space and how it impacts the citizens of San Carlos, particularly the youth. It's a tough act for me to follow, because I think the young woman before me was going to be much more eloquent than I am, but I'd like to add on to her statements. Similar to school overcrowding, our sports leagues also are vastly overcrowded. Over the last 10 years, we've had a significant increase in the number of families and youth in our city, but we haven't added any new field space. Consequently, we just do not have enough field space to meet the demand of our residents. As an example, our SCU organization has doubled in size over the last five to eight years. And furthermore, each spring, we form new U8 boys and girls teams. We are only allowed to form two new teams, so we only have space for 25 boys and 25 girls. The last several years at trials, we've had over 70 boys and over 60 girls at each of these trials. And so consequently, we're turning away almost two-thirds of them, just because we don't have enough field space. And that just isn't right, that kids don't get to play because we don't have enough field space. And the result of this swap is actually a net gain in park space as a whole. It adds the trade of the four-acre, underutilized North Crestview property for four acres at TL, which will be developed into a field, and the other three acres at Heather. So for a $1.5 million investment from the city, we can develop a brand-new field at TL, and, which is critically needed. And in addition, it mitigates the loss of field space, because CLC will be built somewhere. And if it gets built at Heather, we're going to lose not only the field space there, but the green space that the Heather kids use to play at. So I urge you to let the citizens vote on this important, critical issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Adam Rack, followed by John Mikowski.
Mayor Olbert, members of the council, I will be brief, but on behalf of the school district, wanted to thank you for continuing the dialogue, keeping an open mind and keeping this process moving. I think the principled agreement that we have adds to open space, adds field space, helps to address traffic, and for our perspective, helps to deal with the overcrowding at schools. I just want to remind you that we, just like us, we're elected to represent the whole school district and all the children, not just one school or another. You're represented, you're elected to represent the entire community. So when you look at this, I think it's important, given how many people are interested in this issue, that you let the people decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. John Mikowski.
Members of the council, John Mikowski, I am a 40-year resident of San Carlos. We have two problems. One, not enough school space. Two, not enough playing fields. Why do we have those problems? Bad, unthought-through decisions 30 and 40 years ago by public agencies. Apparently, back then, people assumed that the demographics of the city would be in stasis, that it would be the city of seniors that it was 40 years ago, and as a result, school sites were sold off willy-nilly. My concern with what's being done is whether this is in of itself a good proposal or not, I'm personally not very certain. What I'm not hearing is a comprehensive review of all of the possibilities, of all of the things that we might do. Building up, I think many of us went to schools that were more than one-story, and walking those stairs wasn't such a bad thing. We don't have playing fields. Where should we put them? This has the feeling, and pardon my words, of a bit of a last-minute back-room deal put together without a top-level review of all the possibilities, a committee of citizens representing all the different interests, to really look at all of the possible options. I'm just not, we're getting presented with one option, as opposed to, hmm, we could do this, we could build up, we could do this, we could move that, we could maybe use one of the other parks for a school site. There's been no discussion of that. That's my concern. This just does not feel like a well-constructed set of alternative review. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I didn't get to announce William Nieto, followed by Louis Giannatavio.
You asking me about the Italian names?
Sorry, William, I'm not laughing at you, so.
Councilmembers, I will describe a fictional city. There are four residents in this city, citizens one, two, three, and four. The city is a circle, and each resident owns one quarter of the land. One day, citizens one, two, and three run into each other, and citizen one says, "You know, if we divide up citizens four's land between us, we would have a nice addition to our holdings." Citizen two and three agree. So at the next council meeting, citizen one gets up and says, "We want to take over citizen four's land." Citizen four says, "What?" The city attorney stands up and says, "You can't do that, unless you put it on a ballot." Citizen two says, "Yes, put it before the people. The people should decide this important matter." Citizen three says, "I trust the wisdom of the voters of this community. Put it on the ballot." The election comes around. Citizen four votes, "No way." Citizen three votes, "Yes, way." Citizen two votes, "Are you kidding me? Yes." And citizen one votes, "Of course, yes." With a 3-1 victory, citizen one goes to citizen four and says, "Sir, please get off our land." Citizen two and three say, "Isn't it wonderful, living in a democracy? Gentlemen, do not let this happen here. It may be democracy, but it's not just. The school board has viable alternatives to build a school. Please do not risk losing the city's most unique park on a ballot measure. The demand for additional school space is short-term. The loss of North Crestview Park will be forever. Please do not let this go to a ballot. Thank you."
Bill, thank you, Bill. Louis Giannatavio, followed by Darab Zokaya. Crystal, do we know if Louis is in one of the other rooms, or, well, we'll put his card aside, just, we'll give him time if he shows up later. Darab Zokaya, followed by Deb, I think it's Deb Urie.
Darab Zokaya, I'm a 19-year resident of San Carlos. I've had three children go through the school system, and I don't live very close to the place. I live off of Melundy, but, you know, there are no sacred cows. Land is land, we can use it, but I want to tell you that my opinion is a resounding no. Building a school at that site is ludicrous. First thing I would challenge all of you to do, well, let me first lay the groundwork. I drive down Melundy, I drive down Britton, get on the freeway to go to work. Every day, there are students that are walking, bicycling, and scootering to Central, St. Charles, White Oaks. If any of you can walk up that hill and go to that school site tomorrow, and then, the next day, bike there, if you can do that, great, build a school. A school is somewhere children need to walk to, parents need to get their kids to. I don't own an EV. I went out, I looked at the Nissan Leaf, the BMW i3, because I want to use the carpooling. But if I go to work, I won't make it up that hill. Okay? That's realities of living on that hill. When I had an expedition and I had my kids driving up, my MPG marker in the car showed four miles to the gallon. People who truck their kids up and down to school, they drive SUVs and they drive minivans. I mean, it's ludicrous. The access to that site for 800 kids, however hundred kids? I can tell you, I have my last kid going to Notre Dame High School. I can't leave every day and go pick her up. I had a taxi cab drive from Notre Dame to my house off of Melundy to give me a quote. Every day, what it would cost to pick her up and bring her over. $18 a day, one way. That's realities of driving to that site every day. If you, in your conscious mind, think that people are not going to be bothered, I think you're kidding yourself. Walk it, bike it, if you still think it's feasible, fine.
Thank you. Dan Urie, or Deb, it's either Dan or Deb Urie, I think.
He already spoke.
I don't think you probably want to bike to the Apple.
No, that's all right. You already spoke, sir. That's fine. Thank you. Let's see. So I, we have Michelle Mohas, followed by Ruth Donahue.
Michelle has requested to withdraw her name.
Okay. So we have Ruth Donahue, followed by James Ritchie.
Good evening. You know, I think this is a very complicated issue. My family supports the Nature Conservancy, we support the World Wildlife Foundation, we also support the San Carlos schools.
My hair.
Okay, all started over. Good evening. My name is Ruth Donahue. I've been a resident of San Carlos for over 12 years. I have every intention of staying here for the rest of my life. I do want to say that my family supports the Nature Conservancy, we support the World Wildlife Foundation, and we support the school district of San Carlos. And what I would like to say is, I think this is a very educated population. And I think that an issue as complicated as this, something that is as indirectly impactful to everyone in the community, people should read the pros and cons of the issues here. Everyone has made a valid statement here, and I can honestly agree with everything. But I think this is something that impacts a much broader audience than what is represented here, and I think it should go to the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. James Ritchie, followed by Lena Dubinsky. James Ritchie? Crystal, do we know if, okay, let me just make a note. Crystal, do we know if, okay, let me just make a note, we'll put that aside. And cycle back to that at the end. That's, so then we have Lena Dubinsky, followed by Robert Dubin.
I already went.
You already, you already went? Fine. Robert Dubin.
Excuse me, but how do I know when my time is up?
When it's about fifteen seconds prior, I'll hold up the yellow card, and I'll hold up the pink card when it's timeout.
Thank you, I understand. Well, my name is Robert Dubin, and let me start with the conclusion that I have for you, and that is that you should be opposed to the abandonment of this open space. And I use the word "open space" as opposed to "park," because I believe that, at the present time, this is more of an open space than a park, from what we've heard from a number of the residents. Now, let me follow that with a confession, and that is that I'm one of those twenty-five percent of the people that don't live in San Carlos. And actually, I live in Belmont, and I live on Hastings Drive, which is adjacent to Club Drive. Now, let me say that I almost didn't come to this meeting, because I said, well, this is a San Carlos issue, why should I bother with it? Now, I'm so pleased that I came, because I've heard a number of things, which I'd like to share with you, from the perspective of an outsider, so to speak. I have no children to attend that school, and I'm not a San Carlos resident, anyway. But I really believe that this is not the highest and best use of the property, if you abandon it. The highest and best use is to keep it as an open space and as a park. I think that I should mention to those of you who don't live in Belmont, and I don't know what your rules are in San Carlos, but in Belmont, we can't even cut a tree on our property unless, unless the tree is less than six inches in diameter, or something like that. And I suppose that you have some rules like that as well. Now, there is a boundary line between San Carlos and Belmont, but on the other hand, those of us who live on the hills there are what I would call "hill people," and we all appreciate the sacredness of that, of that situation, because we get to see beautiful views, and, and we also, I'm going to finish up in a minute, and we also get to understand that schools come and go, but open spaces like that and panoramic views, once they're gone, they're gone. I really do believe that you should look at other alternatives, as people have mentioned, and I think that that may help you solve your problem in a different way. I'm sorry, I overshot my tongue.
Thank you, Robert. I'm going to cycle back first to several people who did not appear when we called their names earlier. Louis Humm, and Louis Giannatavio. All right, I'm going to assume that they have left. And then we also had James Ritchie. Left also. Is there anybody else? That's what I have for speaker cards. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council on item 5A? All right. Thank you. And thank you, everybody, once again, for abiding by our rules and, and treating each other respectfully. That's a hallmark of our community, and I think it was on, on display again tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocut?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Obert?
Yes. Gentlemen, discussion. Oh, sorry, Ron is whispering in my ear that he would like to propose we take a quick break. Why don't we plan on being back here at nine?
I didn't mean to, but interrupt you, but I wanted to make it.
All right, thank you very much for accommodating us there. Before we proceed with the discussion on the dais, our process is that we see whether or not there's a motion and a second on the item under, that's up for action, because if there isn't, there's no point in having discussion. So I will entertain a motion, if anybody cares to make one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt resolution 2014-.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, overruling protests opposing the discontinuance of the use of the real property located at 336 through 364 Crestview Drive, APN number 049-041-050, commonly known as North Crestview Park, consisting of approximately four acres as a public park.
Is there a second?
I second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion or follow-up questions that council members may have had as a result of public comment? Ron?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question is for Mr. Rubens. There was a comment by the attorney earlier about, something about the Superior Court having to approve changes. I don't know if she meant the general plan, or, or, or the park adjudication. I'm really not sure or clear what she meant. Can you help me with that?
Well, at the, the letter, the thirty-one-page letter had a number of attachments, and one of the last attachments was a writ that the developer had brought against the city and other parties in 1978. And in that writ, the city was basically commanded to process the developer's application, and the, there was a specified tasks that the city needed to do, they're numbered six A through F. My read of that, and my understanding of the history of the development there, is that the city fulfilled all those items in the writ, so I, I think, that's, that's about all I can say now, because I haven't seen the entire court file to see what the basis for, for the attorney's contention that additional court approval is needed. I can tell you that, since that time, the city adopted a general plan that, that included that area, up on the Crestview Drive area, including specifically designating the, the North Crestview Park as a park. It hadn't been listed as a park before that, in the general plan, and the, and the zoning was changed up, up on the, in that area. Didn't change the densities of development, and, is, the densities for the buildings and the, and the housing up there wasn't changed as part of that zoning change. And that, that was done without a court approval. There was no claim brought against the city for, for doing that. So I'd be glad to talk with council about that, but I just don't see that there's any court order preventing you from doing what you're planning on doing tonight.
All right. And then, there was a comment that if the ballot were successful, that, you know, we shall abandon. The park, I almost got the impression that we're required to sell it at that point. I thought, we could do anything we want with it. We could keep it as a park, right? We could sell it to open, the open, mid-peninsula open space if we want.
Well, I, I think, in short, my view of the way this process works is, at the end of the process, the city owns the, the property in fee without the park restriction on it. There's nothing in that law that prevents the city from, for example, should we not be able to reach a final agreement, or should the school district, as, as been suggested, decide not to complete or close escrow on the transaction, from putting the property back into park use.
All right. So we could end up just doing nothing, and just keeping it the way it is.
Absolutely. That's, that's my opinion.
All right. I think that's it for me for now.
Other questions that were, occurred to council members, or either by public comment or during that process? Yes, staff?
Maybe we ask a question of the other attorney?
Oh, we, you really want to do that? I, I don't think that's a good idea, we're going to.
You know?
Only reason, because you're going to have, I mean, can we get all the other attorneys out there, too? I mean, you know attorney, how attorneys work, Matt. No, no, no disrespect to the members of the bar, but I, I mean, whatever, I'm just, it's just an opinion, the mayor can decide, not me, sorry.
I would, I would prefer not to do that, unless there's a, unless Greg, you advise me otherwise.
You know, the, you've already closed the public hearing, so the, the council as a whole, the law authorizes limited questions, but that's up to the council whether or not they want to allow that as part of it. I can't really make a recommendation whether to ask a specific question of an audience member or, or not.
Okay. All right. Other questions of staff? Then, I believe we are in that famous discussion phase. Anybody like to start the discussion? Cameron?
So, I'll speak on behalf of the motion, and I'll start by thanking everybody for all of their public comment tonight, and all of the public's participation in the process thus far. There's been a lot of eloquent and heartfelt statements on all sides, and it's very much appreciated by me. I think our, our task tonight, and what we're, we're voting on here, is, is pretty simple, to me. It's, should we let the people of San Carlos vote to build a school and to build a soccer field? It's not much more complicated than that, at least to this specific question. And, you know, as has been discussed tonight, last week, we reached a tentative deal with the school district, and I was, I support that deal. And that deal, as everyone knows, I think, calls for swapping land on Crestview, for land on, behind Tierra Linda, jointly partnering to build a, a new soccer field, and then the city also taking ownership of the trails and Dog Park to the west of Heather School. And I think, you know, there are reasonable arguments to be made on both sides of that plan. The residents of the Crestview neighborhood, many of whom have spoken tonight, they live in a very quiet, very peaceful, very beautiful neighborhood. It's one that is nestled in amongst the natural environment, it has views of the bay, it has views of the Santa Cruz Mountains, and I understand why they would not want additional development in their neighborhood. But I side with others who would say, we have a growing child population in San Carlos, and we have a responsibility to provide the facilities to support our kids' schooling, their ability to play, ability to develop, and that this plan helps achieve that. We, we live in a, a city with scarce public resources, with very little available and developed land, and what this plan represents is a good compromise and a creative solution to a significant challenge for our city going forward. But as I said, I think that reasonable people can disagree about this, obviously. We have many reasonable people here tonight disagreeing, and that's what democracy is all about. But I think what I'd say to my colleagues is that one thing that we shouldn't disagree on is that the people have a fundamental right to make that determination. We have a petition from people who support this plan with over fifteen-hundred signatures. We have a majority of the city council that has voted to move forward with an election. This is clearly an important issue that impacts the future of our community. And my view is that, when the law says that the people get to decide, you let the people decide. And so I would say to my colleagues who might want to vote to not move forward with an election because they disagree with the policy, that I can understand that, but I think that you would be doing something more profound and more destructive than just simply disagreeing with a policy. You would be robbing people of their right to the democratic process, and you would be obstructing an election. And you'd be effectively saying, I don't agree with you, so I'm not going to let you vote. And so I don't think that that's what the democratic process is about. I think we should all agree that people have a fundamental right to have their say, and that it's up to the proponents and the opponents on either side of the debate to make their case to their neighbors, to make their case to the community. case to their neighbors, to make their case to the community, and to respect the outcome. And so I hope you will join me in supporting this motion so that we can move forward with letting the people determine what the best outcome is. Thank you.
Thank you, Cameron. Matt?
Well, I hear it all the time. Certainly got a number of emails. We have the right to vote. We're a democracy. We are not a democracy. We're a republic. And we stood tonight and pledged allegiance. What did we pledge allegiance to? A republic. State of California. Look at the flag. State of California is a republic. Do you know what that means? Means you have a right to vote. You have a right to vote for your leaders, people who make decisions on your behalf. That's what a republic means. Actually, in this country, the idea of ballot measures and propositions and so forth didn't come about until after the 1930s, and that's when they became very, very popular through some different measures that went on during that time. But prior to that, people voted for their leaders, and that was it. Now, I would be willing to change my mind. I think everybody knows where I stand on this. I'd be willing to change my mind if there were things that we could clear up first so that the people really could vote. I find it interesting that it was said, we have an educated population here, and I'm not going to discredit that. I think we do have a lot of smart people living in this town. However, I had an email come from a lady who said, please let us vote. And as a test, I just wrote her back, and I said, tell me what it is you think you're voting on. And she wrote back to me and said, well, we're voting on whether or not to build a school at North Crestview Park. We have no project, though. And she said, that's California law, that if you're going to build a school, it has to go to the people. That just goes to show there's a lot of confusion on what exactly people are voting on, what they think they're voting on. So I think the things that would need to be cleared up, for me, before we put it to the voters to decide, is, number one, we should look at our general plan. We should decide, because we created it, we, the council, not necessarily the same people sitting here, but we created the general plan, we have to change it before going to the voters with the option of abandonment of that plan. In other words, we, as policymakers in this town, should show the public that what you're about to do is not incongruous with the general plan that we have, or that we feel, as policymakers, it's okay to amend that general plan so that what you may be about to do would be congruous with the new amended general plan. And that should be subject to an EIR. Because if we made a decision going into something that required an EIR, then to back out of it should require an EIR as well, to look at those changes. Now, the importance of the general plan, I was trying to think of what examples to give, because there's a lot of policy guidelines and then action items, if you read through the general plan, relative to this decision. And if you look at the general plan, the way it's set up, there's the housing element, there's all these different elements. Part of it is just, Chapter 7 solely deals with parks. But even if you went to other parts of it, like traffic and circulation, you would find things in there that would be tangent to this issue. But let's just look at the parks and recreation part of it. One policy. One policy is Policy 1.2, walkability. Locate a park or a recreation facility within one-half mile of every resident. Now, currently, because of Vista Park, which is really, in my view, it's just a pocket park. There's not much there. If you want to go have a picnic and see the bay, you can do it. But you can't walk around that much. There's, you know, it's not that big. Most of it's down the hillside. If you take away North Crestview Park, suddenly, you have a whole segment of San Carlos that is not with, residents are not within half a mile of a city park. The only other place that exists right now is up against Eaton and, or Cortez Creek, whatever it is, Redwood-City border. You have a whole section there that's further than half a mile from any one park. So again, those are decisions that we should make ahead of time before we put it to the voters and put it on the ballot. I don't mind putting it on the ballot, but there's a lot of complex issues. I disagree with you, Cameron. This is a complex matter, because there's a lot of things that are tangent to it, and we, as a council, ought to clear those up before we put it to the ballot. I do think, the thing I believe the attorney was talking about, Mr. Collins, is the development agreement. And that happened in a court of law with a federal judge. The city voluntarily entered into that agreement. And in my mind, those parks are integral to how all that housing was developed. There was increased density in that whole development because the parks were pulled out from the entire 100 acres that were originally purchased by the developer. So I think we have to look at that and say that that's okay to take this park out of that density mix. I think, actually, people talk about promises made and promises to be able to vote. I think we, as a city, four times have made a promise to the people who live in the vicinity of North Crestview Park. We made a promise to them when we entered into that development agreement and voluntarily entered into the agreement with the judge to go forward with the development and so forth, as it was, with Vista Park and North Crestview Park being part of it. When we approved our general plan in 2010, we reinforced that agreement. As Mr. Rubens said, it wasn't designated as a park. In our 2010 general plan, we designated it as a park, giving further confidence to the people that live in that part of San Carlos that it would be a park. When we did our, the EIR study that went along with the general plan, again, we gave promise to those residents, you can count on this area as being a park in your community. And finally, when we did our Parks Master Plan, we gave confidence to those people that this will be a park near your home, in your community, in your part of San Carlos. And we all know, we've all campaigned, we've all walked San Carlos. It has pocket communities everywhere. In North Crestview, that whole area there at Club and Crestview, even, I would say, above where Mr. Griselli lives, because he lives in a different part of, on Crestview. But that whole area up there is like its own little community, and I think we have to respect that. So giving it to the voters, I think Bill here gave a great example of how something like this is going to work, more than likely, and I think that's unfortunate. But again, I come back to, I would ask my council members, consider what you're doing. We don't need to be rushed by the needs of the school district. We're elected to be city council members, and I think there's some things that we need to clear up and take care of first before we say, okay, we've done our part, we've looked at our general plan policies, we've looked at all these things, and we've even looked at the original agreement, had the city attorney look closely at it. He admitted tonight, he hasn't pulled out the file and really researched it. He's been busy doing other things in closed-session meetings with us. But I think, you know, we don't need to be rushed. We need to do our job first. And then, if we've done our job and we feel okay with it, giving it to the voters, then I'm fine with it. But as it stands now, I'm not fine with giving it to the voters.
Thank you, Matt. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think in my nine years on the council, this has certainly risen to the top as one of the most difficult issues that I've had to deal with personally. I'm not as technically oriented as my colleague here with general plan and all the rest of that. I tend to use a lot more practicality in my mind, and again, I'm not dissuading you from doing the way you do it. Everyone comes to their agreements and their opinions in different ways. I must say, I believe it isn't necessarily a simple issue, at least it's not in my mind, and perhaps to others it is. You've got playing fields versus open space. You've got education versus property values and ownership. You've got trading land. Are they equivalent values? As I already battered the members of the bar, I'll also batter the appraisers in the world, that you can get 10 appraisers in here and probably have different opinions of what all those land items are worth. Mr. Grocott indicated the perhaps inconsistency versus the general plan and the history of North Crestview and designated as a park. Certainly, there's, there was going to be increased traffic on those streets. I do live on Crestview. I live right below Melundy, in between Melundy and Britton. Crestview certainly has its share of traffic going both up and down its streets. There is no other, as one of the gentlemen said, there, I've tried walking those hills when I ran for office, and I usually park my car, walk a block or two, come back, and then, you know, drive my car the next block to be quite, like a post person delivering mail. It's, those are hard. It's, unfortunately, no one, or very few students will be walking or biking to that, to that school, if it's a charter school the way it's set up. People will have to be driven there. So that's going to increase traffic, no question, one way or the other. You know, the school district, and I forgot to mention this, and this is the one I wanted to do first, I should have started with this. I want to compliment the school board and their staff, and our staff, and my fellow colleagues up here for the hard work and the ideas that have come up. People may disagree on whether this is a good idea or not, but an awful lot of work has gone into it. It hasn't been a snap decision or snap judgment on any of the parts that I just, or any of the folks that I mentioned. We may agree to disagree, but I don't want anyone to think that people just walked in here on a whim and decided to come up with this. The separation of powers, I would call it, sometimes, the school district has its certain purview. The city council has, in a lot of ways, a completely different purview. Sometimes, they aren't the same. I'm not saying we shouldn't work together. I hope to continue to work together with school district on other items, but sometimes they come in conflict, for whatever reason. We're speaking about, and I'm going to be jumping around here, so it's going to be stream of consciousness. Hopefully, folks have read James Joyce, because that's the way it's going to be tonight on this. But just ideas that I've written down and ideas that I wrote down as I was listening to speakers. I think, you know, it's one thing to say that you don't support the democratic process unless folks vote on everything. And I've said from the dais a number of times, what's the threshold of folks voting and not voting? We all ran for office. We all worked hard to get here. Sometimes, I'm wondering why, but we did. And we got elected by the citizens of San Carlos to make the tough calls. If people do not want city council members or school board members, we'll give everybody a button, and we'll just broadcast it at 7:00 on a Monday night, and the item will be up there. It'll be discussed by certain staff members or whatever, and everybody gets to vote. That's not the way it works here, and you know it isn't. And it's a tough call on whether things should go to the, in my mind, whether things should go to the ballot or, as Mr. Grocott said, to the responsible people that were elected by the citizens. There's cost to the city for planning, the resources that could possibly be, if it went to an election, could possibly go the other way. And unfortunately, that would be a lot of time and a lot of effort that unfortunately could go south. The other part is, there's been a lot of discussion tonight on both sides. I can envision that neither side is going to go away. So I can see a four-month campaign, and I can see a lot of information being disseminated. Hopefully, most of it's correct, but as we all know, in political campaigns, sometimes it isn't correct. I think it would be very divisive, or divisive, rather, in our city, because I think it would pit groups against each other that shouldn't be pitted against each other, whether it's by age, whether it's by where you live, whether, whether you have children or not have children. There's an enormous amount of whether you like open space or don't like open space. There's an amazing amount of folks who want more fields or don't want more fields. There's an amazing amount of folks in this city that have differing views. And I know a lot of folks are conflicted, as I am, on this issue, because it's not, again, in my mind, a simple, simple item. The 50-50 split that was agreed to in, just, again, we do not have an agreement, but was indicated by Mr. Malpe earlier on, on the split of a property. If you go to the concept of trading X for Y, and then all of a sudden, Y becomes 50%, sometimes Y might not be the value that you got for it. In fact, X isn't the value that you got for it, because it's all sort of mixed and matched together. That's something that's a little bit troubling to me. Another item, obviously, none of us can see the future, but when we passed the bond, and I voted for the bond issue, and I voted for every bond issue in this school, in this city in 30 years, for the schools. And I don't have any children. But I think, as some of the speakers said, education is the most important thing that we have. But having said that, when the bond was passed, and the district knew it was going to have to build some, it didn't perhaps see the huge increase in students, but they knew they were going to have to do some building. That's why they passed the $72 million. This property wasn't even in the discussion in that campaign. It didn't exist in, maybe it existed in someone's mind, but it certainly didn't get out to the public side of it. Perhaps it came, perhaps it was, or perhaps it just came later. If it wasn't, if it didn't happen, if it just didn't exist, if it was already, let's say, a Burton Park situation, we wouldn't be, I can't believe we'd be talking about it. Maybe we would, but I can't believe we would, because no one certainly is going to say, let's build something at Burton Park right now. I guess the last item I was going to say is that, for me, I have spoken to dozens of people on this issue. I've spoken to staff members on, in the city and the school district. I've spoken to board members on the school district. I have not spoken, again, because of the Brown Act, I have not spoken with other members of this council, except in some of the discussions when we had in closed session. I've read hundreds of emails. I have not responded probably to 99% of them, because I quite honestly don't have, it's just, there's so many. So I want to make sure that everyone understands. When I get an email, I read it. And I've listened to all the public comment. I've been at every meeting and listened to every one of the persons, people that spoke here. I don't make a decision. Anyone who knows me knows that I don't make a decision in a vacuum or with preset prejudices. I try to get as much information as I can from all parties. And that's what I'm doing tonight, and I'm going to be listening to my other two council members when they speak, and I'll be deciding when we vote, how to go on this. And it's not going to be one that I'm looking forward to, because I know no matter any of us, how we vote, yes, no, whatever, there's going to be folks out there that are going to disagree with us 100%. But that's the nature of what we have up here, the democracy we have, and, or the republic, as Mr. Grocott would say. It's the way the process works, and we hope it works for the best. So those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Bob. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Much has happened over the last three months on this topic, and as should be the case, we San Carlos have very strong opinions on it. I think one thing that's been reaffirmed, though, is that we really have a profound sense of what we believe is important to us, and what we care about, and those we care about. And as Mr. Griselli said, each of us on the council has received hundreds of emails. We've received phone calls. We've had meetings. The arguments have been well-stated. They've been compelling, and I agree with most of the points on both sides. But tonight, as required by law, we decide whether to abandon this proposal or place it before the voters in November. We're not empowered to accept the plan without a public vote, and without a public vote, no one gets to decide. For me, the decision does come down to a simple concept, even though it is a complex program, and the whole issue is very complex. But it does come down to democracy. A republic sets in process, or it establishes a democratic process. A republic sets in process, or it establishes a democratic process. Because we're a republic, we don't ignore the democratic process. It's part of being a republic. You know, I think that because we've got a proposal of this scope, and it is so big, I think the voters ought to be given an opportunity to weigh in directly. It's not really about whether I want a school or a park. It's about the democratic process. Our constitution was written to remedy what our founders were or did feel were abuses by British rule and were oppressive practices. Democracy requires our participation. We can't turn our backs on it, and for better or worse, we Californians have settled a lot of issues over the last 100 years with a public vote. I could vote against putting this on the ballot, but as I've said previously, I really, to me, it's about trusting the people of this town. I have deep respect and appreciation for everybody and all the residents of San Carlos. Emails, phone calls, appearances before the council have shown how much you care about this town. It's really difficult for me to favor one side or the other, because I've known people in this town since I was five years old. Some of them still live here. My old next-door neighbor still lives on Plymouth, and yes, Mrs. Mueller, I do know the Dalkeys, in case you're watching. But I really believe we stand at an important crossroad with this proposal. One, it'll significantly impact many residents and aspects of our city life. It doesn't really matter what happens. Something's going to happen, and people are going to be affected one way or another. So feeling strongly that your voice be heard, I'm going to vote to place this proposal on the November ballot.
Thank you, Ron. I echo a lot of, as it turns out, I echo a lot of the comments that I've heard from my colleagues heretofore on the dais. So I'm just going to try and add a few, maybe a little bit more personal views on this. It is certainly true that we live in a republic and not a direct democracy. It's also equally true that part of the lawful operations of the republic, in itself, established rules for allowing direct democracy in certain situations. And it would be inadvisable of us and inconsistent of us to ignore those. In this particular instance, we actually have kind of a funny situation. I actually have sat down, I had some conversations with staff members of Assemblymember Mullins' office and State Senator Jerry Hill's office, and as I walk them through this process, and they, I walk them through, "Well, we have to have a public hearing and a supermajority vote, two-thirds supermajority vote to go put it on the ballot." They go, "Okay," and then you go, and they go, "Wait a minute? What was that?" I go, "Yeah, we have to have a supermajority vote before we can take a normal vote to decide whether to put it on the ballot." And they all scratch their heads and go, "What's that for?" And I always look at them, I looked at both of them and said, "I don't know. You work in Sacramento, not me. You go find out." The reality is that, for reasons that aren't terribly clear to me or anybody who I've asked the question of, the legislature set up, back in the 1970s, a very squirrely process in this particular instance. And just to be clear, it is not squirrely, whatever our personal opinions may be about the matter of supermajorities. It is certainly not squirrely to say certain topics require a supermajority vote. I mean, even the U.S. Constitution, in order to amend it, you require a supermajority Nor is it unusual to say certain things are not within the purview of the elected representatives of the people. Because Matt's right, that we are elected to make decisions on behalf of the community, and we stand before you every four years to convince you, assuming we wish to run again, to convince you that you ought to grant us that charter. But there also are instances where we are denied the ability to make decisions on your behalf. This actually is one of those. We have to make this supermajority vote, and then, and only then, it goes to the people for you to decide. And for me, when I look at that pattern, I think it's a very simple situation. Whenever we have to go to the voters, we go to the voters. Pure and simple. It is both the democratic way, it is recognizing the fact that whatever authority we exercise on your behalf, sitting up here in front of you, comes from you. Doesn't come from anybody else. And so when we're told that, after we make a decision, that we have to go to the voters, we in general, my feeling is, in general, we should say, "Well, unless there's some really compelling reason not to, we should step out of the way and let you vote." And I'll close just by making a couple of little observations. This is an interesting week for us to be having this discussion. Today is June 30th. Friday is July 4th. July 4th commemorates the birthday of our nation, a nation that was founded on, though it is a republic, it was founded on democratic principles, and whose guiding documents contain phrases such as "we, the people." Doesn't say "you guys, the elected officials." It says "we, the people." It is the democratic thing to do, and I emphasize, I'm talking little d democrat here. It is the democratic thing to do, in my opinion, and honors our traditions and is highly appropriate in this week of all weeks on the calendar, that in this instance, however complex or simple one may think the issue is, that in this instance, we stand aside and we let the people vote. All right. I'm hearing silence from the rest of the dais. I think, let's call the roll. Motion and second. Crystal, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
No.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Obert?
Yes. The motion fails, pardon me, the motion fails for not achieving the required two-thirds supermajority. And I believe, Mr. Malpe, Jeff, that that essentially obviates Item 6A.
That's correct.
In which case, we will adjourn the meeting.